The Lord is with us to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, any executive sessions?
There were not held.
Public comment?
Boring work.
Morning.
Morning.
Public announcement. Public privacy, that's it. Recently, my young mother was in a relationship with a young man.
Yeah, no, cannot. The air conditioner's on, so you can talk into the microphone if you can. Closer, just.
Her, her microphone torching.
I don't know about Katalan or the rest of us. My young mother was in a relationship with a young man, and she discovered a long-standing relationship with a young man that had come into the United States across the southern border. Uh, he was from Venezuela, and she also discovered that he was one of the Venezuelans. And she had been talking to him, saying that she was going to report him to, uh, police, and he in turn stabbed her thirty-plus times in the back in front of her children. The Commonwealth and Pennsylvania had local police on the, um, scene, and what happened is local police weren't able to capture the gentleman. So they called in the state police, the state troopers. State troopers were unable to get the person. So they called then the border patrol, and border patrol actually ended up getting the, uh, Venezuelan. Governor Shapiro ended up having a photo op where he congratulated local police and he congratulated the state police for their efforts, but he failed to thank the border patrol who actually caught the Venezuelan who was here illegally and who stabbed his alleged girlfriend in the back thirty times in front of her children. But personally, I'm quite appalled that in this Commonwealth, we can't give credit where credit is due because we can't acknowledge what's really going on. We don't want to know what's really normal because it has such far-reaching ramifications. The people who we have to pull out, it's my understanding, approximately twelve million, billion people to come across our southern border, and they have been dispersed throughout the United States. There's a city in Ohio where the town has maybe thirty thousand people or twenty thousand illegal immigrants who don't live in that town, who may just don't want to do a meaningful thing. I believe that we can't do competency tests on the President of the United States because if we found out that the man was incompetent, we might also determine that an incompetent person cannot pass orders that, um, impact the whole country. It is very dangerous what's going on, and we are in deep trouble. I'm also going to say that we have passed the point of these in the section that we are technically in the beginning stages of a great depression that is going to be worse than 1921. We are in deep trouble.
Good morning, Jeff. Morning.
Good day.
Take us another week off. Jeff Tanco Palo Alto. You discussed last week and the last year, two years, about backdating. It was supposed to be done away with. There's at least six things on the agenda today that are being backdated. So I'm not sure when that practice is going to stop, but clearly, six things are at least icing real quick. Hopefully, just take, take care of that. Ken Hatter. When I was away, it was a little huffle, but it sounded like you said he resigned. That hasn't been on a court record yet. There's no other person on a court record. So is he still on the payroll? Is he still being paid? Is there a reason why he's not on a court record?
Oh, you don't want to lose a court record.
He received over twenty thousand dollars to work from home until this was investigated. But I understand quite a few people that should have been interviewed during the investigation were never interviewed. So I'm not sure why it was drug on for, what, four months, five months? He had twenty thousand dollars of the county money and then all of a sudden resigned. So it's almost like a Krakowski job, backdoor deal there. Uh, any update with Lisa Stevens' investigation? We've got the Hatter one, hopefully, resolved. Anything with Lisa Stevens' one?
Do you want me to turn it down? I'm sure we've referred to it on the chat.
All right. Uh, I see she's not here again, on the agenda. She hasn't been here in four years, but she's intended to be on the agenda. I think she just resigned. Have we ever found out the typewriter, the issue with the typewriter?
No.
Nobody checked out which office that was? Okay. Any update on how the reassessments go? Vision is getting all kinds of money, eleven, twelve, thirteen, probably more than that, million dollars. Have they given any updates? They're never here.
I'm just getting a lot of them coming actually from there.
Because I got some interesting messages and phone calls about being attacked by dogs, guns pulled on them, injuries from properties. They're not properly training the people or preparing the workers for what they're, you know, what it entails. My, my question is, are this accounting on purpose in it?
You know, I asked that for the first time.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, my thing is, anybody can sue anybody, obviously. I know they're a police division, but that's a mistake and still got to account. Uh, so again, if these are workers that are reaching out to me that either left because of it or have just been a county worker, loves being fooled, or love attack, so hopefully we get our take.
You know, we asked that question numerous times.
So we're fine.
About low people's properties.
Right.
And these individuals.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning, Dale.
Good morning.
I'm going to save some time because you guys are going to stay. If you could just share this, please, just let it break in.
Not breaking in all the time.
There you go.
How do I do this?
And here's the.
How about that? Oops, sorry. Okay, well, just have it hold this.
All right, good morning. Uh, for those of you that don't know, I'm Dale West. I'm the current grant coordinator for Klein Township, prior chairman for the Board of Supervisors up there for nine years. I come to today with, uh, to say thank you to the county for helping our township overcome a barrier we have. We didn't have an ADA bathroom. By looking at the photos there, you can see, uh, before the grant, uh, that was like one of those nineteen seventies when you go outside the road there, a little, little rundown, flies and such, and not the greatest. Um, so we applied back in, uh, twenty twenty-one. I wrote the grant. Mr. Bender's not here right now. He was instrumental, he guided me through that. Klein Township has never received a, uh, a CND grant ever because of our LMI. And, uh, once I was informed, I'm a time marine, and when I came on board, I have a kind of a little bit different way of attacking things than some people before me. So we tried to go ahead and get some grants and bring some of that tax money back to our residents. And, uh, this was very important to us. The building that this is put in is right next to our main hall, and, uh, it, it used to be an old fire station, okay, the building there. So, um, like the gentleman asked, he said, hey, why you got the trophies above the toilet? Is that the bathroom? It's everything that gets pretty much hand-me-downs. But that's, uh, for COVID, that was our auxiliary meeting hall. That's our polling station and, uh, for, for emergencies, for, for shelter there. It's huge for a lot. Some of the things that had been changed in there, uh, not only the whole structure, you know, bringing it up to current ADA standards was very important because we couldn't get, we had more and more residents of aging community that come in for a meeting or for, for other services, and they weren't able to utilize that. So we are very thankful now that Klein Township, when they come in for current needs, that, that they've been, uh, going out, those services. And I, I think that's what these grants are for. I wrote on here, one of the things is, and I think it's important, is, is, uh, municipality and the county can come together, okay? And we can use our resources, our, our tax dollars that, that we pay taxes, but hopefully those taxes go to the right, the right things. And it's just nice when it comes back to us. So I thank the commissioners for their support in that. I want, uh, Mr. Zimmerman's in the back, Zerofuse, uh, Gary Bender, instrumental in, in, in helping us and guiding us through this. It was a new process. There were some stumbles in the beginning, and then, uh, everybody came on board, and, uh, a mission was accomplished and it was successful. So hopefully there's more of that for, for more of your local municipalities. Just want to say thank you. I think I took time out today to come down here, and I always make those up as a, as a time microcer, uh, after action reports, as big to us as what we do right and what can we improve on going forward. So those pictures will be hung on, on the wall at Klein Township up there outside the barge. You can see what was before. And then that right up by there is a big frame back there, the front territory, them up there. But, uh, they'll be hung up there to say where the funds come from and to let them know that our partnership with the community is aligned, and that, that we're very thankful. But again, thank you for everybody down there at the county that helped out. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you for spearheading this, for Klein Township, that's all. We need people to do the kind of things. I don't want to hit Carrie yet.
Together.
Good job, Dale. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
David Lowkon.
First Nick Kovich, Palo Alto. Once again, I'm here for veterans and the senior citizens of this county. We see what government's trying to do. Uh, we're getting rid of the Constitution because, uh, anybody could get immunity if you're a politician. This is ridiculous. If you found out it were a crime, let me tell you, if I went out of here and did something wrong, guess when I'd be in jail? If they caught me? I'd be in jail that second. That second. There would be no niffs or buts. It's ridiculous for our. I'm, I'm so grateful to hear this, uh, young man coming down here and saying what he did for. And see what happens with county and municipalities work together. Something gets done. Something gets done. And that's what's wrong with not only our county, our state, but the United States of America. Think of people first. Building situations, they're secondary. People are first. Because if we don't do it for the people, who are we doing it for? Who are we doing it for? But you get a photo op when it gets something done. And you know what? All the politicians in the county, in the state show up. But boy, if they have to be somewhere where there's negative affinity, they don't want no part in it. I had nothing to do with that. And they blame the Democrats, and the Democrats blame the Republicans. That's all it's about, blame. Instead of getting situations done. Parking authority. Do you want Potsill to grow? Do you want Potsill to grow? Fifteen minutes for a quarter is ridiculous. Ridiculous. What can you get done in fifteen minutes? Some people can afford a quarter. This is nuts. You're making this town a ghost town. You see the pictures of the Republican, uh, in the nineteen fifties, how the streets used to be? What people, you couldn't even, I, I remember when I was a little boy, when we came, we, when did it come to Potsill? That was the place to be. But what's not being Potsill today? This is ridiculous. In all the stores, when they were trying to get cheaper leases and stuff, they couldn't get it. So that's why they went to the malls. Let's face the facts. We did, as a government, local and state, we did a terrible job. Terrible job. And then they went a pat on the back and they're putting a two-and-a-half, uh, million bridge over there, and who's using it? That two-and-a-half million dollars can help out people. That's my, my concern. Souls that are living on this earth. God wants to help our neighbors, not help ourselves. Okay? And that's what it's all about. I'm tired of this, the way the things are being handled.
Any other fellow comments?
I can linger the following a little bit. Uh, Malika Dyer of North Manhattan Township. Okay, let's go back out to the West End. Where do we stand on setting up the meeting with DEP and the homeowners? And I'm assuming the commissioners were also going to be involved in that meeting. So you can respond like after I'm done or whatever, so we, you don't cut into my time because that's going to upset things.
Uh, I, I asked Gary Bender, who's been off the last two days, to, last week, when we were up, to find out what's going on with the outset and up. So I'll make sure that happens.
Okay. And I'm not sure where we stand on, um, setting up a county employee that you were going to dispatch out there to NSP, like when the complaints, uh, on the odors, et cetera, were really amped up. You were going to try to see about getting, I, I don't know what sort of certification they would have to get, but you were going to try to see about getting a county employee set up that you could send out there to document and be like an extra voice on behalf of the commissioners to respond or to contact DEP, uh, with complaints.
Or they're still waiting for DEP's attorneys to send us back if that's legal, if it would give it more standing.
Yeah, probably from their standpoint, no, it won't. It will not further, uh, the issue. Also wondering where we stand on getting DEP to fund the soil, air, and water testing for the homeowners out there. I'm sure they are concerned about liability issues. So they would prefer that nothing ever be documented because as soon as all of that is tested out there, I'm sure there's going to be issues. And DEP is concerned about that. So unlike Erin Brockovich and everything that she did, uh, out in California, where the company was, you know, trying to be proactive and do all the testing and everything on that hexavalent chromium out there that was causing so many issues and problems, uh, DEP is wanting to be hands-off in all of this. Lots of fine money was assessed against NSP, and some of that fine money should go towards the testing for those homeowners out there. Okay. Another issue, where do we stand on following through with the dictates of the thirty-two-page consent decree following the workplace completion of the workplace climate survey? There was supposed to be training sessions, different things were supposed to be put into effect, uh, both for employees and then also, uh, directors, managers, supervisors, department heads, role officers, whatever, like separate training. So we, we've gone, we've gone a long time, and we have not heard, heard absolutely nothing about that. But meanwhile.
I commented on it once before, but we, we passed, now we're in the phase where the Department of Justice has to look at what the recommendations are that we made. And once that's coalesced, we're in the process of, once that's done from Townsend, I think is what it is. Townsend, once that returned from Townsend, then it's implementation, to implement the training. It's like a drawdown process, it has to go to the courts. We had to review it, it goes back to the courts. And now we're waiting for them to return it to us to say, okay, this is good. You're, you're complying. So that's where we're at.
Okay, and do we know what that timeline is? How much longer they have to review that? Because I believe the consent decree was quite, uh, definitive.
Yeah, we had to give it to him by a certain point, but he can take, I think they can take as long as they want, Townsend. They kind of set the consent decree, so it's up to them to get it back to us now.
Okay, so you're waiting to hear back from Dan before. But you do already know how you plan to proceed with those training sessions?
As long as everything's approved by Townsend, yes.
Okay. Because we are in dire straits in quite a number of our county offices, and those training sessions are needed. And I know you guys, well, really the Solicitor's Office, about Brooks and Marge trying to pat themselves on the back with, woo, we did such a great job with this workplace climate survey. I would contend that the percentage of participation that you had was because you have employees who were not happy with their current workplace environment. And those who did not participate in the survey were probably afraid that they were going to be targeted or have a bull's eye on their back, and they would end up losing their jobs. And I do know for a fact that some department heads have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to figure out who was responsible for certain comments that were submitted on that survey. And Houston, we got a problem if that was going on.
Well, I think it's good that they participated. Because you can't fix a problem if people let us know what the problem is, so.
Exactly, but now some of those same people are being targeted. That is the problem.
I don't blame who. No, we're not.
Okay. I know you're not. I'm not saying you are, Larry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Um, I just want to touch on a few things. Um, we have, on Saturday, we had Ron Jaworski, the Eagles quarterback here promoting the maroons about their stolen championships, that was a real nice event. I also want to talk about the starters and stripes event that the England sponsor. You know, it was great to see everybody from across School County come together. You know, tons of people around, there was no problems, no issues. It was a well-run event. It was, it was really nice. We spent, it was hot, but it was, it was a real nice day. Very hot, but it was a very nice day for School County. And then also, I just want to touch on, you know, well, you said something last week about public comment. I'm fine with public comment. But the stuff that's went on lately in the country with President Trump, everybody has to realize we don't hate each other just because we have a difference in opinion. And that's one thing, I, you know, I don't want anybody to think that. I don't hate anybody. You're allowed to have your comments, as long as everybody's respectful of each other. We need to get back to being respectful to each other and realizing, hey, we have a difference in opinions, and we can still all get along. Go out, have a beer together, or whatever. You know what I'm saying? Like that's, that's the stuff that's going on. So those are just the three things I wanted to touch on. I don't know if Bruce and Gary would touch on anything before the weekend, or, or have an annual conference at all.
Just want to mention, I did receive, uh, we talked about the Emergency Association, the ambulances. I did receive my application sent in for the Shenandoah Community Ambulances. They're covering thirteen different communities right now. An interesting part was there's a, a fee as asked to be a subscriber. I did talk to Rich Examias more to be a subscriber. What that means is if, say, you get an ambulance, God forbid an ambulance, uh, call my farm or my house, and the bill's nine hundred dollars, okay? If my insurance company pays it, you're fine. Now, say my insurance company pays seven hundred, that's the two hundred bucks left over. If you're a subscriber to your local EMS at the Shenandoah, they'll only, only bill you half the difference. So for thirty bucks for an individual, forty, sixty for a couple, seventy-five for a family, that's a big savings if you have to have these ambulances. So once again, we, we have a need for our subscribers to, for help. And, you know, you also send more than the minimum amount too, so. But, uh, just like our fire companies, our ambulance associations, you know, support them, support their fund drives, and support their, their fundraising events, so thank you.
Okay, children and youth?
All right, Carl.
All right. Good morning, if I may, uh, thank you for your comment on disability and public comment. Presenting on behalf of children and youth, uh, we have an addendum to the agreement with Pinkney's Vineyard Faith Ministries, Red Lion, Pennsylvania. Uh, the addendum is to the original agreement dated December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The addendum extends its term to include fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, according to recent terms. Uh, but they also adjusted identification provisions and a training requirement with an end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We have an agreement with Albright Cleaning Services Incorporated out of Pine Grove for their cleaning services at twenty-four dollars per hour per worker with a minimum labor charge of ninety dollars per work assignment for the term July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Seeking approval of agreement with Alshred Moscow, Pennsylvania, for certified secure document shredding services provided every other week. The cost is seventy-five dollars per sixty-four gallon container and twenty-five dollars fuel charge per service visit for the term July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Finally, we have an agreement with KS MST of Warrington, Pennsylvania for multi-systemic therapy services at a rate of seventy-five dollars per fifteen-minute, uh, session and multi-systemic therapy for, uh, the problem sexual behaviors model of the service. Uh, that is at a rate of eighty dollars per fifteen minutes for the term of July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I, I'm sure, sorry, move on? Sorry? That's why I like to just say the title of things, I don't know, just kind of go for it.
Looking for, to approve a resolution to submit a home American Rescue Plan application to DCD. Also approval to award a contract in amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents to Bill Davis Cement Contractors for a demolition project located at four twenty-one West Cherry Street, Shenandoah. Uh, approval to award a contract in amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars to M&amp;J Excavation Incorporated for a CDVG project in Port Carbon. Um, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars will be from CDVG funding and thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars will be from Port Carbon funding, and this is for, uh, nine ADA curb ramps. Uh, approval to award a contract in amount of ninety thousand, one hundred and eight dollars to Gaver Industries Incorporated, doing business as Barker and Barker Paving for a CDVG project at Cedar Street and Clay Street in Tamakiwa. Fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents will be from CDVG funding and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents will be from, um, money obtained through, through the borough of Tamakiwa. Uh, next, approval to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Port Carbon for the CDVG ADA curb ramp project and approval to enter into cooperation agreement with the Borough of McAdoo for a CDVG stormwater project.
Just to add on to that, just what the gentleman here, the past supervisor, talked about. Many of the community development block grants, which Ron and Cheryl and also with the assistance of county administrator oversees a lot of these, uh, programs. Many years ago, the entitlement, there's entitlement communities that got their own block of money. Now they're all got consumed into the county, and we got to handle both the entitlements and also the block of money that we get that's out there at large from the county. And, uh, these folks do an excellent job deciphering, and it's, there's a lot of work, uh, with community development block grants. Definitely, uh, on surveys, on the low income, to the, the need of the project and so forth. So it's not an easy go. I, I know it from, uh, helping in, in School Haven and, and those types of things. But the end result are some really, really good projects. Fantastic, whether it's ADA or street curbing, uh, or whatever it might be in, in some areas of the bathroom replacements, uh, just to talk a few. Uh, these are things that are very important. This is money that comes from the federal government, comes down through the state government. So on the federal level, if you get a chance to talk to your congressman or senator or whatever, tell them how important these community development block grants are, especially in a rural county like School County. These are a lot of things, as you can see, that they combine the money together, both on the federal level, state level, and also the county level and the municipal level to make it all work and to, to make that community better. So that's why it's so important. Uh, I'm glad to see that it came down, uh, to show that. Sometimes we don't see the end result, or we hear it out in public, but if you go into the communities, you'll see and talk about a lot of the community block, block grants. So that's why it's so important. That's why you see a lot of things on the agenda for that, to make that municipality. So again, Ron and Cheryl, uh, thank you for the job that you do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The four twenty-one cherry, that's the one that's cherrying, man? Right there where Jim's all those hills?
No, this is.
Everyone.
Yeah, that, that one on the main street, that's already down.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, that one, that one on the main street or something.
Yeah, that one, they took down with their funds.
This, this is, this is part of the cherry street?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Yeah.
Good morning, Jeff Polcino, on behalf of the Board of Supervision. We are requesting approval of a contract with Pennsylvania Counseling Services Incorporated to provide counseling services as described for a period of one year, beginning August first, two thousand and twenty-four, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, specifically psychosexual intake at three hundred and fifty dollars, polygraph testing for one hundred and twenty-five dollars, individual and family therapy at one hundred and twenty-five dollars, group counseling at forty-five dollars an hour, and any court appearing to request a three hundred and five dollar bounty.
Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Todd.
Yeah, one item of presentation, an interim agreement with, uh, Invictus, Mr. [inaudible]. I have one item, uh, presentation, entered agreement with a convict that's actually prepared emergency communication services from New York. They allow us ten usual licenses for prepared assist plus, and twenty-five usual licenses prepared on scene. What this does is, remember when we had that catastrophic failure? This was actually our backup. We can see, now that one call's coming in, we can go to prepared and try and make contact with those callers, so. And it's for a one-year contract, July one, uh, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount in the agreement is eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Just wanted to give you an update, too. I know I sent, uh, a memo up about that next generation core services that we were doing, testing for, for these last three days. Testing, there were a couple bumps in a row. Testing went well. However, we can't go live because there's an issue with the connection coming from Carbon County, but there's two diverse paths, one's coming from the south, one's coming from Carbon. There's issues with crossing the railroad tracks with Port Carbon. So they're working through that situation. So we did the testing, but we're not gonna go live until we have those two diverse paths. Just to give you an update on, on that, that one's.
Do you have a timeframe on that at all?
We're, we're testing, they're, they're doing testing as, as I speak. Today was our last day of that. We're looking if P P and L and, uh, Z O can get together, we're looking mid-August for that, uh, that, that's, we're going over to that, that core services, which the entire state will be on the core services. We're one of the last groups in our northeast region to go on that, but, uh, we're hoping, we're hoping by the middle of August. We haven't heard back yet. Z O and P P and L have to get together, so. Okay, thank you.
Treasurer's office.
Good morning.
Today I am presenting the Treasury report for the month ending June twenty twenty-four, ending balance and account, one hundred and eleven million, five hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Thank you. Thank you.
County Minister. So I am.
Oh.
Um, on behalf of Lizard Schoolville L S Workforce Development Board, on recognition from the U A, from the L S Workforce Development Board's Finance Executive Committee, that we, W, we accept the project budget for the program year of July first, twenty twenty-four, June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with a four-point-two-five percent increase for the program's year budget of twenty twenty-three. Approval is requested to accept the annual budget of the Lizard Schoolville Workforce Development Board. And then the following three items, so we brought them up at the pub, the meeting last week that they're gonna be voted on this week because they're, uh, time constrained by what I think it's been used about here this month.
Right.
I was like, oh, should we approve those three requests that were up to the last week? Is that it?
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Boo, finance officer?
Commissioners, uh, good morning. Uh, this morning, uh, visiting your agenda are two budget adjustments, and those, uh, budget adjustments have been posted outside the boardroom.
Human Resources.
I ask for seeking approval, uh, to, uh, provide a revision of the current development policy, which clarifies the potential tax implications of tuition reimbursement, and also makes minor clarifications and grammatical corrections. This policy was initiated by the Resource Office, and we're also looking for approval for the continuation of the employee assistance program within roads and family guidance center. That contract goes from July one, twenty fourteen, thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, provides up to three sessions per household member per contract year. The base cost six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Each employee session is billed at seventy dollars per session. If there's a critical incidents, trustee briefing, uh, they're billed at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour plus mileage, and the additional required consulting is ninety dollars per hour plus mileage, and the contract includes two hours of training plus orientation and literature that can be distributed to employees.
This motion for personnel, this was minus the last week, it grouped it into the wrong thing. Can you read that out?
Yes, we have one item from the prison, the equipment of Vanessa Shavier, correction officer, part time, the rate is twenty-three point zero seven three zero, effective seven fifteen twenty-four.
Can you complete that motion for a second? Okay. Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And then the only thing on the new business I want to talk about is, since we cast the state budget and they did nothing on the P A skill machines and gambling in all our, our gas stations and everywhere that, with our county solicitor and our treasurer, I'm looking into seeing if we can require small games and chance licensing for these establishments because all of our churches, all of our football associations, all of our fire companies, our ambulance, if they want to do anything, they have to have a small games and chance license. These establishments have nothing, no regulation whatsoever. So I, I'm looking into this as a first step to try to get account of what these machines are across our county and where they're at. So we're gonna look into trying to do a small games and chance licensing for them. I think it's just fair. So, new business. Can I have a motion? Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioners, I also just want to mention this morning, uh, there was a bid opening in connection with, uh, whole B items and, uh, waste tire collection. Uh, those proposals will be reviewed and afforded at future date.
Good. Thank you. Can I motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.